to hold. Today is September 6, 2023. Order of business, our tree advisory board appointments. We have two appointments as a common council. I believe we have one person here and maybe two. And, okay, and we are going to go into executive session for this. I think it should be private. So we'll go in the back room, interview each candidate, give them about ten, fifteen minutes each, and then we'll come back out and conduct our business.
Mr. Chairman motioned to go to executive session to discuss the employment.
Yeah, do I have a second? All right, we have a second. All right, let's go into executive session. First up will be Gabby. Executive session. Thanks, everybody. Right now, I have the Utica Police Department hold. The chiefs on the department are here. I know Councilman Vitrus had a few questions, had some concerns, and then we could open the floor to other council members if they have any questions for the brass in Utica Police. I know Councilman Beatrice had a few questions, had some concerns, and then we could open the floor to other council members if you have any questions for the brass in Utica Police Department. Councilman Beatrice?
Yes. Yes, first I want to say thank you guys for coming. I appreciate everything you do. I really appreciate that you respond to emails and you're always there to answer any of my concerns. So, I just got a couple of questions and I'm more or less looking for some advice from you guys and some ways to try to solve, you know, any issues. So, we know about the issue we had at Park, because it was Park Edge, I think it's.
Apartments, Dever Drive?
Yes, and we all know the way today, nobody, I can come and shoot you and you're not going to tell me who shot you. So, you, you know, it's very difficult for you guys to do your job and reinforce everything. So, my concern is over in that property, there's an entrance and then, you know, off Herkimer Road, and then I think on Dever Drive, there's another entrance exit. How difficult would it be for us to insert cameras at those entrances? I know you can't do it at all these buildings. And it just hears my thinking, my thinking is if at 11:20, there's a shots fire incident, okay, and nobody wants to talk. Now you guys, you can kind, maybe we can whittle it down and seeing what cars are coming through at that time and maybe giving us a lead on something. I don't know, does that even make sense or not really?
Yeah, so in this case, we're talking about the shooting after July 28th.
Well, I'm talking there and then I also found out that even on Candlewick Apartments, there was a couple random, they, you guys had a couple calls where, I don't know if somebody just shot in the air or shots fired. But there again, you know, you got those two, that one, you got those two entrances. And I'm just thinking, not just those places, maybe, you know, my colleagues around the, you know, area that have other apartments like that. And the other thing is, did we not, or did we vote for, to put cameras on apartment buildings before something a while back?
I don't know that we've ever voted on putting cameras on apartments, but I know that.
I think didn't when Delvin was here, I believe.
It was the red light district or something that.
We may have had to approve camera access and easements to use certain, there was.
There was proposed legislation to put cameras on.
Through when Delvin was here, right.
But I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't know the details either, but what I'm, so what I'm asking, is that something that is doable?
So, let me explain, our pole cameras that we have now, the ones that are paid for, that we are part of it. We're getting grant money from the Visual Criminal Justice Services off a gift program to put up those cameras. It's mandated, they go in high crime areas where there's a lot of violent crime. We had this one incident with Dever Drive, which wouldn't qualify as some of the other areas that we're dealing with when it comes to gun violence. Now, I know the mayor's put up some cameras with other funding, I don't know where that's come from, in other areas like downtown, I believe by one of the projects. But again, I don't know where that funding is coming from. I, just from our standpoint, the monies that we get from grants to put up these pole cameras, they're coming from the Visual Criminal Justice Services and they specify has to go in high crime areas, specifically violent crime, and we have to have the data to support it.
And the only thing I'll add is I know that we don't own all of the pole camera. Some of them are national grid, so we have significant issues getting our equipment on those cameras without getting permission from National Grid for the, the power source.
It's, actually, it's, it's very complicated sometimes to get a pole camera out because not only you deal with National Grid, you're also dealing with the telephone companies while on the horizon. So, you have to get permission for both. They put you through.
The ringer.
A litany of paperwork that goes through it and just to get up some of these cameras, it's taken two years.
Actually, I'm not really sure. I just actually got, I just really got, I just got invited, right.
But to your point, these cameras are playing a vital role in these investigations because as with the shooting in Dever Drive, we got absolutely no cooperation. What happened was, give you a little background on that, there was a party that was recently released from jail, they were celebrating his release from the jail that day, they had a party at that apartment. We arrested that guy, rearrested for weapons charges, they still had the party anyway. So, rival gang members showed up there, thinking he was going to be there, and that's when the, the, it went haywire from there. But we did, we did through pole cameras and business cameras identified the suspect vehicle in that shooting.
So, how did you, why, you have pole cameras there?
No, these are business cameras, business and residential cameras.
Oh.
You're able to identify the vehicle. The case is still ongoing.
Are these the townhouse apartments at the corner of Herkimer Road and whatever?
Yes.
So, I just got an invitation.
I did too, I was just going to say that.
So, I assume Liberty Affordable Housing is taking them over?
Yes.
No, not, they did.
They did.
They closed up a few weeks ago.
Right, so they have taken them over, right.
They remodeled all of them and, you know, it's.
But that was your question, is do you own?
Yes, I know I got to go to, yeah, I got an invitation as well to go to this grand opening.
That would put it in law, large apartments.
Yeah, it's multiple.
They should be, there should be cameras, you know, a mailbox, a laser pointer, whatever the case.
That's, yeah.
That we need to enforce, just like a tree, take down a tree, you got one year to replace it.
Right.
The same kind of stuff.
So, you guys would think if we push something like that, that would help?
I don't think that would pass.
If you have a property listed, you want to put up a camera.
No, well, even you're saying the people that own the apartments?
What do you mean?
The people that own, the management?
You know, the management down on Oikus.
Right.
You know, I mean, they have to have responsibility for their tenants, and so where there's a lot of crime going on there, they should be putting cameras up, whatever the case may be.
I don't think it ever passed.
The only thing is we couldn't compel them to do it. I'd love to see it happen, but.
Well, we could, you know, I mean, when it comes at where you have a lot of people coming, you know, it's something we need to investigate.
Yeah, I mean, that was kind of a serious situation there, I believe. What was it, 30 or 30 or 35 rounds were let go at a house, right?
I think in that one, it was total of 13 shell cases, two what, Dever weapons.
Okay.
I think we should enforce these big, large apartment places like White Spole Street, every house, just like, you know, you had a little talk and stuff.
I think we should also force them to have onsite security if they're big enough. Lily and Cooper, the people who live at Lily and Cooper would benefit from onsite security, as would the people at Kennedy, who recently got it back.
Or just enforce the laws that we have in the laws, like do some abatement, I mean, that's, that's a nice start.
The complex is a little different though. I mean, these are all individual, individual homes or apartments or whatever.
Right.
I mean, you're talking apartment building where you're walking through a hallway.
Right, that's why I just think, that's why I was figuring, a camera on the street going in, a camera on the street going out, and you could just see, it would help you out. Obviously, like you said, the cameras did help you, that's.
Listen, if we, if we come up with some money for camera equipment, we don't have to follow the red tape to say you have to put them in high crime areas. We might be able to put them in areas of need, like of concern, if you have a concern, we might be able to do that, so you don't. But once you get it from DOJ, we have to follow the guidelines, the data's got to prove that you justified why you're having a camera there.
And the cost of the camera, the cost for this, is it a one-time cost to buy the camera or is it just continuously maintenance and stuff?
It's a one-time cost for the camera. The only thing is we can get technology changes sometimes. Like, for example, we first got our first pole cameras back in, this 2007 for James Street where we had a rash of shootings on there. Those are all analog cameras. We just recently had to replace those and take those cameras over with the newer, advanced digital cameras.
That's a long time, that lasted a bit, from 2007 to now, that's pretty good bang for your buck.
Before then.
Oh, okay.
Isn't that second.
I mean, you need high definition, you need night vision, you need some good quality stuff.
Is that eight hundred, is that eight hundred and forty, I think it is, ain't it?
I think they did, they are switching, I think Liberty is switching to.
They're getting funds from the state of New York, right? Why wouldn't they have to pay for their own cameras, you know, protect their citizens?
I know in the past, we dealt with housing visions and we had meetings with the mayor, them and us, trying to convince them to put cameras up in their facility. And they told us yes and never did so, despite all the means.
They asked to do that, that's what they did.
So, the reality is, I don't know legally how to compel them, unless, if you came up with local law where they had teeth to make them do it.
There's only one way.
They're getting state funding.
It needs to be part of the pilot agreement that we give them.
They're getting state funding.
Or if they initiate an issue of abatement, I mean, I don't understand, I don't know.
Yeah, but this, like, for example, that shooting, a lady and her daughter lived there. The daughter asked the mother to have a party. And they don't, there's, I mean, there's no problems, they're, right, but, but there was no, yeah, I'm sure they probably did throw the lady out now.
All right, any other questions, Councilman?
The other, the other thing is, I wanted to thank yous for doing the study on Rutter Street and Sweep and stuff. I'm just wanting, can you explain to me what you mentioned, that a four-way stop is illegal, when we've, we've just had numerous ones.
Well, here's the issue with stop signs. Quite often, people want to use them to slow down traffic. Stop signs and signals are used, are meant to be used to control the right of way of traffic. They're not meant to, for speed enforcement, it's improper use of those. So, I know it's been done in the past, I don't agree with it. If we have a speeding problem, then we should give enforcement out there.
Yeah, but I think the intersection of that, what is it, Tilden and, Tilden and Rutter, I don't think the issue was a speeding issue there. It's an issue of.
Till Rutter, you wrote 15 tickets.
No, 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 I know, on Rutter you did, yeah, yeah, but the light broke and they never replaced it. They put a flashing light there.
Best, best like a hole you want and start like that.
Okay, but, I mean, what I'm saying is, in the case where you're saying that four-way stops don't stop speeding, but in this case, the intersection.
Well, they could, but it's.
Yeah, I understand it, but in that intersection there, that we have the flashing light and they're not going to replace it, kind of like we did on, on St. Anthony's and.
We haven't heard, I haven't, I don't know if anyone else has heard back from like that, if we intend to replace, fix it, I mean, you have, you have a flashing yellow there, or flashing red with two stop signs. It doesn't even.
Makes sense.
It doesn't, doesn't make sense. So, you can do one or the other.
You gotta fix it light or.
Wait, which one?
Rucker and Tilden.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Our is going yellow and accident.
I mean, really, the light should be fixed.
Yeah.
So, can I follow up on what you were saying, Chief, that stop sign is not, is for enforcing right of way?
Forcing right of way, I know citizens quite often say, I want a stop sign to slow down traffic. It's really improper use.
So, what's the one on Greenwood Court doing?
Greenwood Court.
And stores.
The one in the middle of the road?
Greenwood Court.
That everyone hates.
Greenwood Court, there's a stop sign in the middle of Greenwood Court that doesn't.
Slowing down traffic.
It's slowing down traffic, right. The right of way is.
It's not the proper place for a stop. There's one, there's also one on.
Greenwood Court has the right of way to stores or.
Brookline and, over on Brooklyn, same issue.
Okay, I can't picture that one, but I can picture the one on Greenwood Court.
Same, same, same type of stop sign.
The one in Greenwood Court, I think, went up after there was an experiment and maybe.
The entire street signed a petition that they wanted one there.
Yeah.
It all came down to speed.
It does make you slow down.
And nobody stops for it.
It does make you slow down.
It does, but it does give.
Did that sound, did that sound a bit of a.
It does.
We did a study on that, remember? We did a big study on that, and just how many cars went by, how fast or driving.
Greenwood Court?
Yes.
Wasn't that the trees that were.
That was the one-way.
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 And let's be clear, that was before my time.
Because it was people were coming, the price drop, and they were flowing down the road.
The residents funded it, they lived on the street.
Yeah, it's working. Anything else?
Yeah, just one other thing.
Go ahead.
About, how are we doing with ATVs, ATVs and all? Boy, I, I know you guys can't fight it, but it seems like even, like, not so much even where I live, but like toward Proctor Park, James Street. I, I can't even imagine some of these bikes.
The amount of ATVs and dirt bikes we see.
They're like gangs.
This year compared to last year is less.
Okay.
But it's still a problem. It pops up every time.
And we have been holding hearings and confiscating them.
Yep, so.
Well, you are guys, how are you catching them? Are you chasing them or?
No.
It's almost impossible to catch, yeah.
No, it is, basically, sometimes they crash. And it just highlights the, the reason why you don't have these vehicles on the roadway, because they're not meant for road use. But a lot of times that, or, you know, we get tips from people where they saw them go in, we're able to identify them.
Or their house, yeah.
We've got a couple where they've, they've seen us and they're just, they're just left, took off and confiscated them.
Yeah, because I was always, in the past, this is the first year, I'm probably going to curse myself now, that there's the lady on Northrip Drive.
Which is above it.
Not once, not once, where they raced through North Utica Park and go through. Yeah, I know I DPW on them, they had it blocked off, but I haven't gotten one call.
I even called around other cities to find out what they're doing, like Albany and Syracuse. They're a lot more successful in confiscating these ATVs than we are. I think on the use of a helicopter, we don't.
Can we, can we borrow the, does the sheriff have a drone that does this, does?
The problem with the drone, from what I understand, is it has to be within the visual sight of the operator.
Okay.
High FAA rules, so if it travels outside of that and.
You can put that officer controlling the drone on an ATV and they could follow it around.
Right.
Well, I think you guys, you did pass legislation, you know, regarding the ATVs, and we had, we've had, have successfully confiscated a number of them, and they're substantial fines associated. Some people pay them, some people.
And they tried to get around the ordinance by saying, oh, it was stolen, I don't know who took it. That's their problem, they have to go to what Harry did.
The average fine is about $2,000.
Don't drive on the city streets. All right, Councilman Mio. Just one question, gentlemen. There's not an abnormal amount of vehicular confrontations until then in Rutter, is there?
As far as accidents?
Yeah.
I saw one accident, it was back in November of 2022, last year.
Okay.
And it was a rear end accident, where a guy ruined another vehicle, stopped at the stop sign.
All right, so it's not a ton of them.
Yeah, I did look at the accident.
Okay, then we know it'd be a different story. All right, that's great. My, my second question would be, we have proposed legislation here for the alarm systems. Did you guys have a chance to take a look at that or no?
That is Fire Department.
Oh, it's the Fire Department alarm, not the Police Department alarms.
Right.
You guys, the Fire Department's adding, you know, would you like yours increased too?
No.
For the alarms, for the, for the false alarms?
False alarms, it's not a good idea.
Where do they go up to?
Stephanie's got the lead on that one, why don't you ask her?
I mean, they send a lot more app rise to them.
Absolutely, but.
You're talking burglar alarms if they go off. We, we don't charge a fee for that after.
No, we do. The first time you get a warning.
Right.
They haven't gone off in just a long time.
More than three, I think it's 50 hours.
They don't pay to put it on the taxes, I believe.
Well, we'll research it and we'll get back to you guys on it and if you feel comfortable changing it, all right? Okay, I'm all set, Frankie, thank you.
One last thing though, so getting back to that flashing light on Rutter and Tilden, so are you guys going to talk to Mr. Mahoney if he says the light, or you want me to or?
We can.
Okay, if he says, but, now if he says we're not going to replace the light, can we do a four-way stop there?
Before we get into that though.
It's odd, because you got a traffic.
We really don't want, we really don't want four-way stops.
Council, Councilman. I was going to ask to bring up the floor.
I mean, to me, it'd be kind of confusing. You got the flashing light and you got forced.
The people in that neighborhood want to see the light fixed. They feel a four-way stop would just make no sense in that entire neighborhood. It's Rucker and Tilden.
Right.
So.
But I think we should see if we can get the light fixed first.
Okay.
We'll learn from yourself.
I will, but.
All right, anybody else, any questions for?
I know, I just, do you want to give an update on the work at the police station?
Yeah, not much is being done. Right now, most important thing we've got, we got to get finished right away is, we're fortunate to have our crime analysis center. We're one of 12 in the state. It's located in the Police Department. We wanted to expand there. And part of the project was move the crime scene unit out and put it into the old cell block area where under veil reform, we're not keeping anybody anymore. The work for the crime, the crime scene unit's been done. We're waiting for the expansion of, and the completion of the crime, the crime analysis center now. And we've been running into one problem after the other. First, it started out, they had a structural engineer come by and he says, there's no problem taking this wall down. My deputy who's not an engineer says, this isn't right. Sure enough, months later, they say, yeah, it's a structural wall. We got to come up with another idea that, you know, to support taking this wall down. So, there's been delays in trying to get the steel there.
Prior to that, when we were doing the crime scene.
There was asbestos station.
There was a structural issue there, they had to order steel to support. They said that our cell blocks weren't, weren't structurally, weren't holding on the second floor. They go to take the cell blocks out and they say, oh yeah, that was, they were holding on the second floor. So, we had to order steel to support the second floor. We had to wait for that steel. Then they said that the wall between the, in the crime analysis center wasn't structural. Started taking that out, they said, yeah, it's structural. They had to order steel for that. Steel's on back order, we had to wait for that. Meantime, they found asbestos. They had to bait that, which you have to keep, you can't do work for two weeks when it's being baited. There's been one delay after other, another that weren't.
And then at one point, they stopped work because they said they weren't getting paid, so.
What is, what is the so?
Who was the engineering company? I mean, that's the first, I know, we don't, don't reveal it now, but I think we should look into it.
Um, one question, do we know how much we've expended so far?
I, I don't, the one thing I, well, we'll tell you. I, I don't. The one thing I, well, we'll tell you this much. The Division of Criminal Justice Services is willing to fit the bill sixty thousand to re-renew that room. So what I'm worried is if we don't get that done quickly, they may earmark that money elsewhere.
I guess my point is.
That, that being said, our, our windows are all done. We have new windows. Our roof repairs have been done. The exterior of the building has been.
Is, is anybody been looking for grant money for hospital or police station? I mean, because it seems like you've put a lot of money into this and you've got the hospital right across the street.
Quite frankly, we're shying the turd. That building's a hundred years old. Yeah, only the usefulness of that building years ago and it's small.
I mean, even the property room, I mean, it's kinda, you know, a little, little scary to kinda keep all that stuff on there. I mean, that, I mean, that's something that I think the city should look into. Maybe ask local health systems if they wanted to buy that and sell it kind of in the parking garage.
Well, they want us.
Oh, I'm sure.
They offered a dollar or something.
Let me, let me ask you a question, Chief. I know you have the records division here, correct?
Yes.
There's no way you can maybe move it into, if there was space on the third floor, you, you want it in the same building?
Well, ideally, you'd like to have.
Another city occupied building. I know you.
But that was taken out years ago. We, we just ran out of room. It's.
Yeah, it was just a thought. I mean.
I'd love to have it in the building. It's just that there's no room. And one of the issues we're gonna be facing along the road is that we gotta think of the intervention of DNA evidence that came into play in the nineteen nineties. Now, when we were getting rape cases, homicide cases, this stuff we have to keep for life, we can't get rid of it.
Yeah.
And it's taken up a substantial amount of room.
I know. You have to secure it twenty-four seven as well.
Chief, where would have, where would have, I mean, if you were ever looking, have you ever talked about another possibility of moving someplace else? I know we've had this discussion years ago and obviously that's how.
So the mayor, we brought in three different architect firms back in two thousand eighteen. We explored some possible sites. Um, I know that, uh, most of the sites we looked at, the problem was is that they're brownfields. There's contaminated fields and have to be remediated. Um, the one plot of land I actually liked, but it's not the site you look at and the state at the time was willing to give us was the Pinefield Estates off of York Street. That was eleven point four acres. I thought it'd be a great idea to have, not only a police department, you could probably build a firehouse along with it. Kill two birds with one stone. Just for a police department, the cost back then would have been forty-seven million. I can only imagine what it costs now.
Right.
It's probably double.
Yeah.
What if they bought a ninety square?
We don't like fake, fake buildings from now.
All right, let's get back to, are we, are we done?
Well, I mean, I definitely think that's a discussion that we gotta, especially if the, if the, the city's not moving though or something along those lines. I definitely, I don't even know, do we have a budget, right? I don't even know who's in City Hall even asking any of these questions anymore, to be honest with you. You know, so I think that that's something that definitely needs to be addressed as soon as possible. Was that funding done through ERPO funding or was that done through the Capitol? I can't remember. For the operating.
I think it was, I'm not sure. What was it?
No, it wouldn't have been that much money for ERPO.
Might be both, a little bit of both.
But that's what I'm saying. So I mean, if, obviously, we're not paying our bills, it's either get it from ERPO or the city didn't, the city didn't expend enough money through the Capitol playing a viral game. I think that that needs to be addressed as well.
I'm not sure.
All right, Councilman Beatrice, you've got your questions answered. Everybody good? I think we're done. Well, UPD will continue. What's in the committee of the whole? We got a couple items in here we could discuss if you'd like. Um, resolution twenty-four, the official newspaper, we're gonna keep that in committee, I take it? Okay. Three, four, seven, and eight, they're all gonna come out tonight. The tree advisory board nomination.
I have one question. It's gonna be like a two-year thing or?
Yeah. Counselperson friend, do you have a?
It, it does have a limit. I don't remember on time. But it's not, it's not ongoing. It does have a, yeah.
We can have one of the clerks, we have get the old piece of legislation that we passed, and it's in there. Um, okay, so, next, avoidable alarm fees. That's through UPD. I mean, that's through UFD.
Yeah, can I just ask Steph one question on it?
Yeah.
Stephanie, you added the A to it. Do you, do you mean that you want it to replace the one that's sitting there? Because I think you may want it just to replace it.
So as it currently reads, um, it doesn't read that way.
I got that. This is each alarm user, but I'm assuming that you want it to be, you want this one to replace the one that's in there, not add to it, right? Because if you put an A in there, you're gonna add to the section.
No, they'll know to replace it with, I mean, we can change it. It's hereby amended to read as follows.
All right, so we'll just take the A out and so they're not adding it. They're just amending the whole section.
They won't add it. They'll just replace it. I mean, I can, you can change it if you want it to read that section two dash fifteen dash seventy-four A of the code. It's hereby amended, um, or replaced as follows.
Replace as well. Is that okay?
We're not rescinding the whole thing. It's just.
Delete that section and then replace. It might just a million times before. Because then people don't realize that it got amended, it was amended at this certain date. It was, it was still of the code. I mean, that's, that's the, that's the way we've been doing it in order to make sure that we're rescinding.
Or how about if we just strike the A out, Sam, and, uh, each, each section there and then it just replaces the whole section with this, uh?
That would make sense instead of it being amended.
All right, we'll do that.
We'll amend that.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
The, the tree board.
Strike out the whole.
Nope, just strike out the letter A. That's all. Out of each part. That, that when we move the section that's there, replace it with this one.
Well, you have to note that it's going to section A.
By putting section A stuff, I was taught by that old time.
Oh, section, yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay, now you understand.
I, I know, I, yeah.
We're gonna go with the.
Vacation was good, wasn't it?
Ordinance three, five, seven, eleven, they'll be coming out.
The, the tree board appointments are for five years, all six of them.
No, they're gonna give a report to the common council what they've done over the five years or every year. It should be reported in a.
The meeting.
Yes.
How many trees they planted, how many trees they've taken out, all this other stuff. Needs to be, you know, you have, you have to have something. Because I know we put a law in there. When we took the tree down to City Utica.
We didn't, we never put that law into place, Mr. Williamson. We never did.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, find it.
When you, when we take a tree down, you got one year to replace it.
We could find, the clerks and I could find no evidence that, that the council ever asked such a law, only that it considered it.
Maybe it was never recorded, Councilman? You never know, right? If you remember it, it's probably there, but.
Find it.
If you, but, Mark, let's introduce a new one. Go right, let's, let's do it. It's fine.
Because they were taking too many trees down in City Utica.
Yep.
And I said, you gotta start replacing these trees. We take them down, especially in South Utica, you know, with the canopy. You know, Corneille, we took all these trees down in Corneille, but they weren't replaced. Take them down, you don't replace them.
I think it would be great if you wanted to amend the tree ordinance to include that. I think that'd be great.
Want to add the section to it?
There is no such.
We'll talk to the judge. He'll get the verbs ready. Mark?
I think that'd be great. I would fully support that.
Amend it if we have. Okay, ordinance thirteen, Dog Park. Any questions on that? And we, we put it in committee. The only thing I, I looked at, section two dash five dash sixty.
Okay.
I don't know. It's A and B, April fifteenth through November fifteenth. The times, the Dog Park shall be accessible, I guess.
That matches all.
That coordinates with the city park opening and closing?
Yes, and the reason.
That's all I needed to know.
And the reason the weather is permitting is obviously.
Yeah.
For whatever reason, we, you know, there's snow. I mean, they're not gonna be necessarily maintaining it.
As long as it coordinates with the parks opening.
Are there any additional?
Issue with that?
Nope. Are there any additional questions for Dog Park?
All right, we reviewed everything in committee of the whole.
Most.
I got a, I got one other thing that, um, is actually getting, um, put in committee at the pre-meeting. So we got a couple minutes. I got the chiefs here. Um, maybe we could talk about it. So it's, it was brought to the attention of, um, President Lee. Um, he has contacted me. Um, I talked to a couple people on the school board, um, and there was an article that came out at the beginning of the year that stated that Utica wasn't, um, allowed funding for cameras for school buses because the school district is a separate entity from the municipality. So I went and I looked through a couple of other municipalities that, um, had, had adopted this legislation and the majority of the school districts are attached to the, to the, to the city, um, which were in a different case. Obviously, there was a separate school board and a separate, um, school district.
Cameras on school.
So I, what I came up with was this, um, a local law established a program imposing owner liability for failure of an operator. Um, it's stop your school bus displaying a red visual signal on stop bar. Um, I had talked to, uh, I sent Sheriff facial message. He said he was gonna look into, um, some other municipalities that have adopted this because he was quoted in the paper that, um, it was for the safety of the students and unfortunately, Utica, um, got short on the stick because they weren't included into that funding. So I don't know if you wanna touch on that or?
Yeah, I just have a question. I, I know you, but we don't own the buses. Like, let's say New Hartford School District owns their own buses, I believe. So they're allowed to maybe, New Hartford.
Right.
Uh, the town of Hartford, maybe.
That's all we're doing.
Are we allowed to put equipment on someone else's?
So we're not, we're not doing that. That's all we're doing is we're giving the right of way to allow that to be done by local law approving that and then the school district handles it from there.
So it's their option if they want it.
If they want to. So, yeah, so the only thing that this is allowing by, by passing this local law is giving the school district the ability to apply to the county to put those on school buses.
Well.
Because we don't, we don't have, we don't have to say incident.
Did you get a request from the school district, Samantha?
I did. I talked to, so I was, I actually talked to Jason Cooper. Uh, Jason Cooper talked to the new superintendent. Um, there were a chain of emails. I told him that I would put the legisla, and I'm not forgetting this tonight. I told him that I would put the legislation and get some more information on it.
Yeah, get the request letter from them and we'll go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see why not. I mean, that's, it's.
Well, I, I just don't understand how we have any authority over the school board specifically.
So we don't. We don't. We don't.
We don't give enough permission.
We're just, we're just allowing, we're just adopting the law.
It has to do with.
For them to go and move forward with it.
My understanding is that it has to do with a state enabling legislation and we're the one, as you said before, we're the one municipality in the entire county where the school district is a separate entity. And that's why every other municipality in this, in the county is already doing this, right? But we would be required to pass this law to make it possible for the school district to do it, right? Yeah.
It's something along that. There was two things, because the paper started asking us these questions. That's why I was inquiring about it.
Usually it's out of our purview.
Well, right. So it is, it is in the state law, so that the city would have to pass a law saying it could be possible. The other thing too, though, is it had something to do with, because when this article came out originally, it was in the spring. And remember, we talked, we talked about it in some, some capacity, not possibly on the floor. It had to do with, not only was the school district wholly part of the city, so it was not considered part of the county because this was a second-class city, but then also, when I talked to the school board prior, they said something about the fact that even if we did pass it, the county wasn't gonna fund it if we weren't, if it wasn't one of the county municipalities and it was the city.
Well, it's just that.
So there was all kinds of, regardless, it is absolutely in the state law that even if the school board wanted to do this, we would have to pass this law first, even if we had nothing to do with it.
It might be part of your contract though. When they do Durham bus, you know, Bernie bus.
Well, that might be why the school board never pressed it, because the school board never raised this prior because like other council people were saying, a lot of the other school districts own their buses. Now, if they had, had to install cameras in all the buses, I don't know what that would do to contracting. Think about when they switched from Bernie to Durham.
Just holding the data.
No, that stuff is gonna be expensive.
And this is for them to take up.
And that was the whole.
Because there's an expense, there's a complication factor, it's the bidding of their contracts. This is a school.
Sam's point is that even if they wanna pursue it, they can't.
They can't right now, yeah.
Until we pass this.
All right, what we can do, we'll put this in committee and we'll have a, a better off discussion on it and maybe invite some of the school board members here.
I just have, the chief's here. He's got some information on it, so we can go ahead.
Yeah, we don't.
So back in two thousand twenty, uh, November, the mayor arranged their meeting with a third-party vendor. It was called Red Flex at the time. For years, they've been selling the, the idea of the city about putting these traffic cameras in place to catch people going through red lights. It wasn't very popular in a lot of cities. A lot of residents didn't like it. So what they did was they reversed, they changed their sales strategy. They went into school safety instead, and their theme was who could say no to school safety. So they're putting our, uh, what they're doing on that traffic sign that comes out on the bus when it stops, putting cameras on that to see when vehicles are passing school buses. And the cameras are good. They pick up the license plate. The way it works, it's a civil fine. So if you go through a third-party vendor, they pay for all the equipment, the installation. They worked the school bus company to install these cameras on their buses. However, there's a lot of other work that needs to go in place. First of all, they want the police to be able to review all their video footage to say, should this go forward with the fine, should not? Um, they said that there would be fees available to the city, which is negotiable. They wouldn't say what it would, would be. And, um, it, uh, and I know the sheriff's department currently does it now, but I think they use a different vendor. They use a third-party vendor than the one we had the meeting with. It's just that it never materialized after the initial meeting that we had back in two thousand ten. Uh, is this something that could be done? Sure, it could be done. It's just that I think what should be done is before maybe we talk about local legislation, maybe put an RFP out for different vendors that had these type of cameras, see what they had to offer so that the city doesn't incur the cost for this.
To be clear though, this would be the council passing a local law so that within this municipality, the school district could do it.
So you could even talk about the early.
But then.
So the only issue that I have is once you pass this local law, there's a lot of other things in here that is not just you saying we wanna be able to do this.
I'm just talking about in general. I'm not even talking about the specifics.
This is what we're gonna be enforcing. Now, I don't know. I had a brief discussion with the chief about this. I know obviously, United County is doing this. Um, one of the issues that I have with how United County is doing it, and we haven't gotten an answer yet, is how do people contest this?
Yeah, I know. It makes no sense.
So there's a lot of legal components that I don't know that the county's worked out yet and they're gonna have some issues if they haven't. Um, I know that I'm, on a personal level, I'm getting clients that are starting to come in with these tickets and they're questioning them. They look like a scam. Um, number one, how you get them?
The owner gets the ticket, not the operator. So your son, your brother, your cousin, neighbor could jack your vehicle. You get a ticket in the mail.
They come from, they come, they come from, they come from a third party. They don't come from somewhere local.
Right, it's totally, that's why the school district never went ahead with it, in Utica.
The ticket is from a company.
Actually.
The ticket is from a company. It shows that it's from, it, it has a marking that it's from the United County Sheriff's, but it, you send the check to a random third party. That's where the information comes. That's where you send the forms.
And I think this.
There's a lot of working components to this that if we take it all on.
Oh, it definitely does. The state attorney. They already made the school district, it's a proven out one. An attorney's got the opinion.
Right, and I think it's great because you gotta cover.
Mr. Chairman.
Right, right. You gotta cover everything. It is six PM.
Can I, can I ask the chief just one final question on this very subject?
One file, one final question. Yes, I hear you. See?
Thank, very good. It's better. Your hearing is better. Chief, just, this is very general.
You have a microphone?
Very hard to answer. How much of this, like how much of this do we see of people actually passing school buses when the stop car is there?
Between the complaints and the tickets we wrote when we had these details, I would say about maybe fifty times in the course of a year.
No, it's not, nothing. Yeah.
Rough.
Right, okay, thanks.
All right, that's the last question. We're gonna end the discussion. If the judge would like to speak, and that'll be the last one to speak, and then we'll end. It's a little after six as, as we speak. Go ahead.
Well, first, the impression is this paragraph that says that the maintenance and use of school bus photo violation monetary system pursuant to an agreement authorized by this local law shall be borne entirely by the city.
Right.
Now.
That's out of.
We, we, we're involved in a school board camera situation a little over a year and a half ago when Mr. Gerace put together an agreement that he wanted to have the city and the school board, uh, discuss concerning the installation of these cameras. That never came to fruition, uh, because administration indicated very early they weren't gonna do this. And then, of course, this local law where it says that somehow we passed this and we're absolved. Well, it says we're gonna board, we're gonna absorb all the costs. And then it says here, it says that, uh, there's a thing where they talk about an agency. I, I don't know what agency they're talking about. They're talking about, uh, how do you, how the enforcement was and who issues these directives and letters and gets you before the court, does go before the city court? And, uh, uh, quite frankly, as I read this, I find more things wrong with it than I find things right with it. But fortunately, uh, this is something that will be, I'm sure, completely examined thoroughly by the corporation council's office. I really, uh, didn't. by the corporation council's office. I really, uh, didn't get the gist of Mr. Giorgio's comment. Did you, uh, you commented on this local law, did you not?
I did. I just saw this today.
Yeah, it's not even a committee of the whole yet, so...
I, I think that your office is going to examine this quite thoroughly. And I, I've noticed in the last year or so, two years, somehow we're always being requested, never comes to fruition, that somehow we assume duties, which have always been the obligation of the Board of Education. Those school buses. Also, there's all sorts of things that happen to you. You pass school bus, you're going to get a letter from the, uh, the Department of Motor Vehicles, and your, uh, the ability to register your car is in jeopardy. Uh, there are all sorts of sanctions here. This one here talks about civil liability of an old owner who was inferred, uh, civil penalties by the mere fact that his car was involved in passing school bus. Of course, which he knew nothing about, but yet you're going to fine him $250, and you're probably going to fine the driver. I don't know what the fine is right now, about the same thing. And I don't know what agency does all this. It's quite, quite confusing to me right now. I'm sure maybe somehow it'll be explained, and, uh, of course, I think that Mr. Giorgio and I will be discussing it. I'm, I'd like to see what Mr. Boral and, uh, Zach Aron...
Thank you, Judge.
I'm just, yeah, you're right.
Thank, thank you, and we'll, uh, we'll certainly look into it.
Yeah.
But right now, I want to end the committee of the whole meeting.
All right, that's all I, I wish to say. I'm sure it's going to go into committee.
It's not even in...
Well, first of all, if you are going to do anything with this matter at all tonight, you would have to make a motion, have it lay on the table, because it is a local law, if you wish to do that. Or, uh, do nothing at all. But if you're going to lay it on the table, you need a motion.
No, it's laying on the table. It's not in the committee.
Well, that's, that's for the meeting. Okay, thank you. That's all I have to say.
All right, we got a motion to close the committee of the whole meeting.
Motion.
Got a second? Good.
Let's take a five-minute break.
We'll close, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll start with the, uh, pre-meeting conference.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, council members, let's rock and roll. It's September 6th. I'm assuming that that clock is right. It's a quarter after six. And I'd like to start on the Board of E&amp;A Transfer. We have an infrastructure wages and salary budget salary transfer for $35,000. Are -- is there anybody who sits on E&amp;A can help us with this?
Yeah, I don't have my E&amp;A. Is that on?
I hear you.
Yeah. This is the -- to adjust for the new senior carpenter position. So this is the new carpenter we've hired who is apparently doing really great work.
Yeah, he's working in the assessment office right now. That's -- it was just simple. We had to move from salaries to wages because it's not a salary position. He's paying under wages.
Right.
So we just moved the cost.
Any discussion on number one ordinance number one?
I have one question. Would the court office be decked out like the other places are?
I sincerely hope very soon.
Well, I'm just curious. Will the court office --
Yes. I agree, I'm with you guys. And I will speak to the engineering department.
The engineer's office in this city hall.
I agree wholeheartedly. I'm with you, so.
They don't have any of that thing built up whatsoever?
Should've been done a long time ago. I agree with you. We'll discuss this with our engineer when he comes in and see if we can get a start schedule for it. All right? Thank you colleagues. Number one is all set. Let's go to number two. It's another transfer. Anybody who like who sits on Board of E&amp;A would like to speak about it?
I mean, the explanation was the explanation. They had to buy more GPS units than they planned for, so they moved the line.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that transfer?
Welcome.
Any discussion on the transfer? Okay. Discussion is closed. Number three, we have another Board E&amp;A transfer. Oh, it's for notes. A band and bond note service. Is there any colleagues, Mr. President or Celeste, any update on this one? This was a band that they transferred?
The last sentence says that all information.
These were bands that were turned into long-term bonds, right, as they are?
They rolled them over?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussions on the bands? Okay. That one's closed. Our next one, there's a memo from Kathy Mack on this next sale. It's calling for a public hearing. Mohawk Valley Systems. This is for the sale of the Kennedy Plaza. This is for the calling for the public hearing. Is there any discussion for calling for the public hearing?
We should put that in committee at the call, Commander Lilly does.
I agree. Mark, is it all right if we call just for the public hearing and then the second part, the sale, has to go in committee anyways? So we can hold it until we get the answers to the questions. My colleagues have some questions about the URA and the hospital agreement. Also, they're looking for a cost study for possibly repairing it and maintenance and estimate of revenue. So I will get that information to our engineering department so we can get that information back to my colleagues. All right? Any questions? Any discussions? Discussion's closed. Our next piece of legislation is an ordinance sponsored by Councilwoman Ayalo. Councilwoman Ayalo in favor of this ordinance?
Yes.
Any discussions on changing for a four-way stop intersection for Cottage Place and State Street? Is -- I think this is just -- what do you call it already there? The sign's already there?
Yeah. No, it's -- no, it's not. They did a temporary one for Mons Williams this summer, so if you wanted.
Okay. Any discussions? Discussion's closed.
Why is it crossed out where it said?
There's a -- there are -- is it two-way right now? Well, no, they're just adding a third one. So basically, there's one at the end of -- there's one from Cottage Place crossing over to the other side of Cottage Place, but there's none on State Street.
So you want to make it a four-way, it's a two-way now?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Any addition discussions?
To reduce speed or for safety?
Not a fan.
Right. I'm confused with these four ways, but.
It should be rescinded and replaced.
So here's the thing. There's a crosswalk there, but there's no actual stop sign. So it gives people the indicator that they're allowed to cross. And they could, but it helps cars actually stop.
All right, I'll talk to my colleague about amending it. All right?
Yeah, no, it's got to be rescinded and replaced. I mean, we just amended the entire code so that it reads.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
It actually is -- yeah, you're right about that.
It's got -- it's got to be.
All right.
I understand that that's -- but it's not from the PPD. And I mean, that's the way the legislation is usually has been, but it's got to be rescinded and replaced.
All right, I'll speak to our clerk and our first ward councilwoman to either add a piece of legislation or amend this one. All right? Any other addition discussions? Okay. You're absolutely correct Samantha on that one.
Trouble is, none of this is like lined up.
Our next piece of legislation sponsored by Councilman Irving.
They know. Don't expect.
The sale of -- no, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I just thought there was a sale. You would like to refer this committee.
I would prefer that to committee. Melissa got it done too fast. And the people that needed to be here tonight didn't make it, so we're complex in committee.
Very good, sir. Our next piece of legislation is about vendors with flowers and balloons.
Actually, Chairman, can we go back to that four-way stop?
Sure.
Instead of rescinded and replace.
Go ahead.
It should be strike Cottage Place in State Street northeast, southwest corners from section 216, 350 and replace with Cottage Place. Strike and replace. Then -- then -- because rescinded and replace will be the same issue as amended to read as follows that you're pointing out. I understand that it's all immaterial, the way you look at it, but.
Well, I was -- it is all immaterial. I was going to say that you're either adding the language to say what you want it to do or you're showing that you're striking it out and putting other language does that.
That's true.
So you pick one or the other.
Yeah, there's got to be a descriptive way to do it.
So you either say what you just said, which is that where you have no strike through and no highlighted, or you leave the highlighted and don't add the language as you said.
So right now, it is strike and replace technically.
Council?
That's what that is.
Council, they're just double checking it, so I would just let it go.
You're not amending it, you're changing.
I understand what you're coming from. I understand if you're just looking at the piece of paper. So Councilwoman Ayalo, I'll help you speak the amendment after so we can put it into file. Okay?
Thank you.
Is there anything else, Mr. President, on that piece? Okay. Our next piece is sponsored by Councilwoman Classmo Testa about some blooms and some flowers. Would you please help us with this?
So we've -- we've got this legislation, oh, God, several years back. The only thing that we didn't do is we didn't do one day. We only did six months in a year. So if somebody wants to come in and sell flowers or blooms for them one day, they just got to come and pay a fee. And it just helps the courts office. It's just easier for them to do a one-day permit than it is.
All right, colleagues, this is an ordinance. Anybody opposing this piece?
I have no opposition whatsoever. I just want to try to understand it. So if you want to sell balloons, it costs 20 bucks a year. If you want to sell flowers, it costs 25 bucks a day. I'm just wondering why.
I don't know. In our system, it's charging $25 for one day to sell flowers. So a lot of people like come in just for like Valentine's Day.
Yep.
And they just want to sell it on Varick Street or wherever.
Correct.
And they just want the day pass, so.
So we're already doing it. It's just you're saying it's not a -- it's not in the ordinance.
Correct.
We're just getting the ordinance to be considered in the practice.
Correct. When I pulled it up on -- yeah, when I pulled it up on E codes, it was just showing the six months and the year, but our system's showing a day also, which people do come in and want.
Right.
So I just want to make sure it's in the code.
It's like food and everything, right?
Right. So is there any balloon daily fee? You don't design.
There -- well, there is. We have food daily fee, non-food daily fee excluding flowers.
What if the balloons are the shape of flowers?
I don't know.
Flowers together.
Yeah.
I don't -- I don't really understand this legislation. It really -- flowers are going to cost $25 a day?
Yeah.
Is that -- if you're selling flowers, where?
On Varick Street.
That they're talking about?
Anyway.
Because.
It's basically like a peddler permit.
So if a person wants to sell flowers on the street, he has to pay $25 a day. Is that what you're saying?
No, it's $25 just for one day.
For one day.
So they'll come in here, get a permit that will type up, so they're allowed to pay to sell the flowers.
They're on the flower circuit. They come here for a day, and then they're to Rome for a day, and then they're Syracuse for a day. It's the light.
And the reason why you're doing this is.
You're right.
If they come back, they're right.
Cost involved.
Well, if someone comes in and says they want to sell flowers for the day, I don't have.
No, I mean.
Yeah, everyone has a one-day pass and we don't, so.
No, my point is, is this something your office wants to gain a little more revenue? Is that what you're saying?
No, she wants to make it.
I want -- yeah, I don't have a -- I don't have a charge. If someone comes and says I want to -- I can't just make up the number to charge.
But your system does.
But my system has it in there for 25. So the girls asked me because they are.
So can I ask a question? How does it get into the system if not through our own system, through our own code?
Yeah.
Say it again?
He's saying that everything in there has a day pass, so for food non-day, for -- yeah.
Yeah, it was probably just an oversight when we gave the legislation.
I think it was.
Yeah, yeah.
And I feel like I talked about this a while ago and it just never -- we never put.
Does anybody actually come in and ask for a permit to sell flowers?
Yeah. Valentine's -- Valentine's Day, they come in. Yeah.
Moonlight Square, they always sell them.
Yeah, they sell them at Moonlight Square a lot.
I can see them on the street. Do a permit for Christ.
They do not have a permit for Christ.
Put him next to his spouse, though.
Is the fee comparable to the other cities that you know of? That's comparable to day pass?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. No, we're good. We're good. I see licenses and permits under there. We're good. Okay. Any other discussion? This needs unanimous? Anybody have any issues with this piece of legislation? Okay. Let's go to our next piece, number nine. This is sponsored by Councilwoman Classmo Testa. This is needs to waive the Thursday rule.
I'm not -- I'm actually going to put it in committee. And then the authors of the grant are going to come speak at next -- at the next council meeting.
I have one question on that. Why is it this north unit, it's not Waffle Field, South?
Rest of the city.
Because we don't maintain. And you'll see that in the explanation that was given through the grant. The city went down to two fields. It's just the parents do a lot of the work and we get -- we get no help from the city. Well, I shouldn't say we get no help, but.
It's been for multiple years.
We're going back to two fields and they want to make this a baseball field with turf. They have a whole goal range. I mean, I can get into it, but I'd rather have the authors of the.
District 10 and the grant writers, they're going to be.
To talk about.
They were accorded as technically, it just needs authorization.
Yeah, they have to have the council. They have to have the council's approval from the legislative body.
From talking to Sam and the other people, it would basically be kind of like a nexus for baseball. Once you had this field like this, you'd be bringing a lot of people and teams from out of town, not just the Little League.
That aside, though, let's just -- because it's something that's -- there isn't district Little League anymore. It's been that for five, well, six, seven years. There's only Utica Little League. And then the permit is for all the fields. And right now, what the Little League does is they do gameplay in West Utica, North Utica, and the alternate gameplay facility was supposed to be this year, South Utica.
But we only got sidewalks.
I sure remember when they did the ADA compliance, there was a commitment to do the fields as well in South Utica.
Right. We only got sidewalks to go to South Utica.
When they did the ADA compliance and the fields didn't get re-prepped. So currently, there's three facilities in Utica where Utica Little League plays. Obviously, right now, East Utica Field, that field set, one will be a skate park and the other one is going to be something else under the mayor's direction currently. So, yeah, they're going to come in and explain this particular -- I just wanted to explain the current lay of the land. There's not district Little League anymore.
Okay, is there any addition?
It just -- it is -- it is kind of cool because besides the baseball, the fields can accommodate flag football, soccer, field hockey, and kickball. So, I mean, there's definitely a multi-use purpose, but that's where a majority of our games are played, is at the North Utica Field and West Utica Field. So we're kind of just kind of -- if a family comes and, you know, they want to see their kid play in another field, we're trying to make it all to a centralized location.
Celeste, you can add my name to this. I told Sam yesterday, but it probably was late, so.
Judge? So I got to put it in committee.
Okay. We do have to waive the Thursday rule for the last pieces that are sponsored by Councilwoman Classmo Testa. I don't think there's an issue with that. Is there any other business?
No.
Okay. Motion to close until our seven o'clock meeting. All right?
The call this meeting to order. It's the regular meetings, the City of Utica Common Council, September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aiello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Urban, Beatrice, Williamson, Calasimutesta, Debrango, Gleimi, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first order of business this evening is the minutes of previous meeting. The minutes have been posted to ECO three sixty for the council of public to view. Do we have any motions?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes, please, Mr. President.
We have a second for Burmaster. Is anyone opposed to reading or waiving? All right, it's waived. We've accepted the minutes of previous meeting. Next order of business is public hearing. We do have four properties involved with that this evening. Does anyone sign up to speak in behalf of these properties? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. May I hear a motion to pull Prop. Ordnance Three from committee?
Moved.
All right, any opposed? The ordinance approving the designation of Wilmer Okonasca Sum as an eligible and qualified project sponsor for Sue Art article fifteen of GML for the purpose of the sale of nine oh four Knox Street for a sum of twenty thousand dollars. Is on the floor for a vote.
Nineties adopted.
Is there a motion to pull Ordnance Five?
Moved.
Second. Anyone opposed? Okay, Ordnance Five. It's an ordinance for the sale of twelve oh one Howard Avenue and three oh two Eagle Street. That is to Doris M. Preather Fuller for a sum of fifteen hundred dollars.
Nineties adopted.
Slow roll. Ordnance number seven. All right. Pull after committee. Anyone opposed? Okay, ordinance number seven is the sale of thirteen ten Noe Street. It's to Karina Bogovic for a sum of ten dollars. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Next piece is ordinance number eleven. Someone like to pull out the committee?
Moved.
I got lots of seconds. Let me go with Williamson. Any opposed? All right, the ordinance approving the designation of GJ Holdings LLC, it's Frank Rosponting, as the eligible and qualified project sponsor for the sale of three oh seven Leon Street for a sum of two hundred and fifty dollars. It's on the floor for a vote.
Nineties adopted.
That concludes the properties in committee. Public hearing. Public commentary. We do have two people sign up to speak. First is Jared Tough. The common council has provided you a copy of section three, two, four, four, Public Common Period Rule. Are you agreeing with this?
Yes.
Please state your name and you may begin. Thank you.
My name is Jared Tough. And please let me finish, Mike. Don't interrupt me. It's gonna be city issues. I know sometimes the subjects are a little uncomfortable, but, you know, that's just the way it is. I'm not gonna be coming down here too much longer, not just because I started a lot of federal investigations on the city for a lot of things that's going on. It's just because, you know, it's not worth it, you know. You get rebuttals and you don't get rebuttals on the subject that I'm talking about. You get rebuttals on the minor thing, so I, I, I just feel that it's being ignored, but, you know, at least I'm doing something outside of this committee to try to get some, some action done. I just want to say that, I wanna give you guys a little, a little event, little experience that I've had dealing with this situation, coming up here and speaking, you know. I was asked by the chairman of the Cornhill area, Tim Trent, to meet with him. So, you know, he's the chairman, so I thought, hey, you might wanna give me the chair, so I don't know. So, I go up there and I meet with this man at McDonald's and he tells me, "You'll get farther if you just worry about yourself." I said, "Really? But everyone in the community is united. You have the Bosnians united, you have the Italians still united, the Asians are united." But me being united with my community is a problem. I, I couldn't understand it, so I let him finish, you know, and he, he did finish. He told me that, you know, when you say "my people," you sound racist. I said, "So, wait, I sound racist by saying 'my people'?" Now, I, I don't, I'm not here to oppress any Caucasians. I'm just here to try to get what, you know, we feel is equality for me and my people, but I, I don't own any court system to oppress you. I don't run any, any jails or any, any schools, any housing, you know. I'm the one being gentrified, me and my people. But, so I told him respectfully, you know, "I, I hear you." I didn't get rude with him. He's eighty-three years old, so maybe he, he knew a slave or something, I don't know. But I didn't, I didn't get rude with him. I just said, "I disagree," and I left, you know, the area. But it did bother me because this is the mentality that I have to deal with, you know, with people thinking that because I'm standing up for myself and I'm standing up for my community that I love, that now, I'm the racist. And I, I love Caucasians. I have a lot of Caucasian friends, you know. I know a lot of Caucasian people, so I, it did bother me a little bit. It made me think, you know, but I'm gonna move forward with what I have to do in life and in my community, because this is my community too, you know. Maybe you guys don't wanna do nothing about the gentrification and the displacement that's going on in, in the city of Utica because it's been going on for so long. It's been going on even before you. It's a way to make money. So, you know, maybe you just ignore it, but I notice when I get up here and I speak, no one talks about it. You talk about the trees being, being chopped down in Cornhill, but you don't talk about the people being chopped away. You talk about dog parks, but not the people, the black people. No, you talk about roads, anything besides us. And the gentrification is real. Over there on Verrick Street, those were houses. Those were homes. You tore them down. Not you guys specifically, don't get offended, but they, they were tore down to build bars. Bars! And no offense, so mostly Caucasian people can work and make money that don't live around in that area. They don't live nowhere near there. But they get, and they drink and they drive away, no one's getting pulled over, but those were homes. And what's building, getting built here for the new being African-American community, it's laws. They call them laws, apartment complexes. We don't want that. We want homeownership the way you're giving it to the immigrants. And I pray and hope that this investigator find out that they were brought here under illegal pretense so we can do something about this. Because this is ridiculous what we're going through, and when we say something about it, we're the bad guy. I don't wanna be the bad guy. You know, I wanna be the good guy, but I'm just gonna, hopefully you guys can talk about it. I see no one's really looking and caring, you know. But hopefully, you know, you guys can talk about this, because it's a serious issue, you know. I personally was thinking of doing something to get a lot of attention here in Utica so we could stop this. Not nothing to harm anybody, but just something to get some attention here. Like, you know, you guys are crushing us and you don't care as long as the Caucasians are okay. It's okay, but what you did with the immigrants when you brought them here, you pushed us even further down the social ladder. We don't wanna be down further. You know, we, we look at the, the flags, they put all of those, those Vet heroes, the hometown heroes. You guys seen that? Yes, okay, thank you. And you notice that there's not any black faces. So, it's like, well, there's just as many black people fought in wars as Italians, so what, what's going on here? So, I contacted them and I found out what's going on. You have to pay for it. Now, they know that there's a, not, just even today, there's an unequal economical value in the households of blacks and Caucasians. And they know even those, those people back then didn't even get their fair share of due. Their families don't have that. You know, they didn't, they didn't get anything from, so I said, "Well, why wasn't it a donation thing?" So, I'm starting something to do, a donation thing, so we can put some black faces up there, because these immigrants come over here and they see that and they're like, "Oh." Because it's all a mind game too. "Oh, well, they didn't do anything. This isn't their country either." Because they, they're treating the African-American community very, very badly. You guys are talking about selling flowers in One Night a Square. Have any of you took a walk down there? It's not your same One Night a Square that you're used to. You know, it's a lot of, lot of drug addicts and a lot of drugs being sold by the Arabic stores there, the Arab stores. You know that, right? I'm here to tell on them. And so what you gonna do? Who you gonna sell firearms to? A drug addict? It just, you guys sound really crazy. You're not out there in the streets. You have to get, I, I apologize. I don't want no one to get offended or anything, but to me, I have to say my words right, because I want friends too, even though I really don't care if you're offended, but, because I don't feel no one cares if I'm offended. You know, my whole community was gentrified in my face. But, you know, they're selling drugs on One Night a Square like crazy, so I don't understand where these flowers are gonna be sold to. But I'm gonna end this, and I just wanna say it's something to think about, because, you know, this is our community too, you know. And science is finding out things, you know, just to let you guys know, you know, the, this is, I'll leave you with this. The DNA of the African and the African-American has been found out it's been split seventeen thousand years ago. So, basically, when Europeans came over here about four or five hundred years ago, my people were already here. So, it's, it's all of our land. Let's work together, okay? That's all I have to say. And I don't hate any of you. If Mr. Tim Trent tell you I'm racist, I'm not, okay?
Thank you. Doris Preather Fuller. You can come forward. Thank you.
I want to take my microphone off of the floor.
The common council has provided you a copy of section three, two, four, four, Public Common Period Rule. Please state your name and you may begin. Thank you.
My name is Doris M. Preather Fuller. I live in Cornhill. Well, I bought a house on Pleasant Street. And I've started a business and I've also bought the property that you just heard mention on Howard and Eagle. So, what I need the council to help me do is for me to get this project off the ground, which is an event center, is what I wanted to do. It's a small event space. And the area's not that big, but it's in an area where I want to do like small weddings, small event things, change the space, do like gazebo on it, where we can have just regular events in the area. I have my part one oh seven for drone license. I take videos of weddings and cameras and things like that, so, but the space is residential. So, I'm asking the, the council to help me change that to mixed use so that I can change the space around to how I need it so that it can work for the project. And that's all I'm requesting. Temple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so just procedural note. Commissioner Thomas, considering what was just stated, if you could step aside and, and explain how she could start that process right now, that would be great. Dan is the last speaker this evening. So, moving on to common council guests, we don't have any. I mean, we always have guests, but no specific guests. Communications from the mayor, we have nothing this evening. Reports from the city officers. Do we have catch reports? Okay, so reports from the city officers. Fire chief, Kingersaw.
Yeah, Fire Academy started about two weeks ago. We were able to get six candidates through the last few weeks. We have two more starting here in the next couple of days. That's through the Safe Act grant that you guys approved for us to pursue, so we're thankful for that. So, they're scheduled to graduate the day before Thanksgiving and then they will be hitting the streets, so we'll be up eight firefighters at that time. Appreciate that. Several fires in the last few weeks. Fortunately, another one this afternoon where, had occurred in a building that already had a fire in. So, we're just asking everybody to make sure that if you have any boarded up buildings in your neighborhoods, to keep an eye on them. If you see anybody there, please call nine one one and get the police over there to take a look and make sure that nobody's doing something in there that they're not supposed to be. That's about it.
Thank you very much. Corporation council, Stephanie DeJury.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Noonan.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Thomas.
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to petitions, remotes versus appeals, First District, Katie Aiello, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to pass this evening.
Thank you very much. Sixth District, Councilman Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
You had me sleeping. First thing, I just got a couple of things. I know most of you doesn't know me, know I walk every morning. I usually go to the New Hartford Ray Hill Trail, but recently I've been going to Proctor Park the last three days. And I have to tell you, I know I got, I used to get some complaints and I still do, you know, about garbage or litter around, but I actually called Dave Short to tell him this morning. The park, it looks absolutely beautiful. The wa, the lily pad, walked up around Buckley, the concrete, the dog park, the, the gym that they have for the kids there and everything. So, we, we should be pretty proud of that, that, you know, we did a good job in it and it looks great. And I ask the people that are listening out there, just take a little pride in your city. Just pick, put the garbage away, you know, if you have a picnic, throw your stuff away into containers and, but like I said, it's, I was pretty, I was pretty proud today when I went through there and it wasn't, you know, it wasn't like it, it used to be. It looked very nice and up kept, and I'm sure it could be a little bit better, but it looked better than it was. And the last thing, I just wanna thank the, the police department for, I know we had a couple complaints and they were right on it. They put a traffic study in over on, on Rutter Street. They put a radar sign there. They, they had a sweep where they stopped sixteen cars for speeding. So, really appreciate your responding and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Second District, Councilman Burmaster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna make you aware, next week, Wednesday night, down to five points, we're gonna meet your candidate. So, if you'd like to come out and see who's running, you know, great time to have any questions or meet your potential candidates for different positions. It's gonna be five points at six o'clock. And we still got maybe three more weeks before you, don't have to put it in a can, so make sure you put it in the can. So, thank you very much, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Thank you. Fifth District, Councilman Benazur, you have the floor.
I have nothing, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Third District, Councilman Fred, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past Monday on Labor Day, I went to the State Fair. Oh, my God, that was so great. It was really hot, but, I mean, the great, you know, the great New York State Fair is pretty great. And the best part was it's a Utica thing, had a huge tent right on the main, right across from the gondola in the main sort of food aisle there that kind of on the midway. And that was really cool. It was just, it made me very proud to, to see that and to have a Cernac beer inside the It's a Utica Thing tent at the Great New York State Fair. So, I recommend everybody go to the State Fair at least once, at least once a year. So, I went once this year, but we're going back next year. So, it was very cool to see the It's a Utica Thing tent. That's all I've got. Please, Mr. President.
Thank you. Fourth District, Councilman Miola, Andrew Jordan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank very much the Speaker of Assembly, Carl Hastings, and our State Assemblywoman, Maryam Buttonshine. And our very, very popular media man, Paul Buckley, because without Paul Buckley asking for the two million dollars, we probably wouldn't get it for the ski chalet. So, I'd like to thank them very much. I know that money's moving forward and I know you're gonna make a lot of people happy in the city by making a ski chalet in our ski center. An investment like that for two million dollars is something that the city people are looking forward to. Once again, thank you very much, Carl and Maryam Buttonshine, for all your efforts and I know a lot of people gonna be enjoying that chalet. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Large, Minority Leader Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to pass.
Thank you. Councilor Large, Samantha Calasimutesta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna wish everybody a happy and safe return to school tomorrow. All right. All right, I'll, that's it. I'll let Frank call.
Council Large.
I got a little bit. He can enjoy it.
Brango, you have the floor.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna talk about. School's opening tomorrow. Make sure you're careful in the school zones. A lot of buses, a lot of kids have been running around. We passed legislation for the speed limit in school zones, so make sure you obey the laws. I'm sure UPD will be out there in full force tomorrow. Let's make it a safe opening day, and I appreciate all the teachers, what they do. I know Sam and I know my daughter-in-law, who's a teacher in the Deerfield School District, and they were there weeks ago setting up and getting ready, and now tomorrow's the big day. The last couple of days, they've been there going through orientation, so just shout out to all the teachers out there, because, you know, they're the ones that, you know, have to put up with the kids for six, seven, eight hours a day, but they do a great job in educating their children, so that's a good thing. I just wanna shout out to my daughter, whose birthday's tomorrow. My mother's was yesterday, so I had cake yesterday. I'll have cake again tomorrow, but, so I just wanted to shout out, happy birthday to both. Thank you.
All right, do you get extra cakes now?
You look, I eat cake.
All right. Can we move on to legislation? Proposed ordinance one, it's an ENA transfer.
Move, Mr. President?
Second, Mr. President.
Okay. It's a 2023-2024 fiscal year ordinance to transfer money from the budget salaries line to the infrastructure wages line for some $35,000 from ENA. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. Next piece.
Number two, please, Mr. President.
Second.
Be ordained, city controllers hereby authorized and directed to make the following transfer of funds, $17,300 coming from contingency, going to Code's other equipment and Park's other equipment, distributed amongst those, account for unexpected purchase of GPS units. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
If you move ordinance number three, please, Mr. President.
Uh, second.
Okay. This is an ordinance from ENA, 2023-2024 fiscal year, from banned principal account to the bond and note services account, some $50,000.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. Next piece is proposed resolution number four, sponsor, well, we need to, someone move this. Councilman Miola. Second from DeBrango. Calling for a public hearing on the sale of 318.42-1-33 dot slash one Columbia Street, otherwise known as Kennedy Garage. A public hearing, if this is passed, would be held Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Purchase price is sum of $1.5 million. It has two Mohawk Valley Health Systems and from the Urban Ring Alliance. And this is the ball here.
Yeah, just calling for public.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number five to committee, sir.
Second.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to ordinance number six. This is sponsored by Council Number IL. Would you like me to read this, or do you want?
Second, Mr. President.
We have a second from Miola. Be it ordained that Section 216, 358 Schedule C, intersection or stop required, be amended to read as follows. Strike Cottage Place and State Street Northeast and Southwestern corners and replace with Cottage Place and State Street four-way stop at each intersection. If further ordained, proper signage be erected. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. Okay, the next piece is sponsored by Councilmember Ear.
Mr. President, I'd like you to go into committee.
Second.
All right. This is the placement of a memorial street sign for T. Revels and Gibson, Mr. Clyde Gibson and Mr. Thomas Revels. Any opposed, going into committee? Same committee. Thank you. Proposed ordinance number eight, sponsored by Councilmember Glossmo Testa. Do we have a second?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to waive the Thursday rule for the remaining pieces of legislation.
Second.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Councilmember Glossmo Testa, you wanna move this now?
The balloon and flowers.
All right, second?
Yep.
Miola's the second? Okay, ordinance amending Section 214-268 requirements for vendors of flowers or balloons, specifically, be it ordained that this Section 214-268 be amended to read as follows. C Section 2, or A, C Section 214-246 through 214-267, except Section 214-263 fees, B fees, one flowers, in highlight, 25, it's one day, it's $25, six months, $100, one year permit, 200. For balloons, $20 a year. Your votes. Should sell balloons.
Nineties adopted.
The next piece is proposed resolution number nine. We do need the Thursday rule to introduce this, but it's been waived. It's sponsored by Councilmember Glossmo Testa. It's a resolution endorsing Utica Little League to apply for a game changer grant.
I think she wanted to refer to the committee. Second.
All right, thank you. Any opposed? In committee. Next piece, which, this piece is a local law, so you could technically introduce it and lay it on the table, or just lay, place it in committee. Okay, so you're not even laying it on the table.
Yep, second.
There's a motion to place a local law entitled Establishing a Program Imposing Owner Liability for Failure of an Operator's Stop for School Bus Displaying a Red Visual Signal and Stop Arm, introductory local law number one of 2023, into committee.
Second, Mr. President.
Any opposed? It's in committee.
We do have pieces coming out of committee at home, Mr. President.
Okay. Tree Advisory Board, would like to start pulling pieces.
Mr. President, I would like to pull proposed resolution number seven, dated 6/21. I'd like to pull that up.
Just voice the nominees. Just voice the nominee.
Hold on, hang on. Looking to it. Seven, okay, this is, this is Tyson Krieger?
Tyson Krieger.
Okay, we have a second. Any opposed to pulling from committee?
Are they pulling on all the resolutions?
Well, we gotta do one at a time. Either way, we're doing one at a time.
And, Mr. President, can I make a, would any, I would love it if we went full council on these. Anybody object?
Hang on. Any opposed to pulling that from committee? Okay. Full council.
I'd like to make a motion to full council.
Second? Okay. Don't oppose that. It's full council. Tree Advisory Board Appointment, Resolution Number Seven, be resolved that pursuant to 21731, the city Utica Code ordinances, the following person has been appointed, appointed, there's a little typo in there. Appointed by the common council to the Tree Advisory Board, Tyson Krieger. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
And, Mr. President, I'd like to pull from committee, I'd like to make a motion to pull from committee Resolution Number Eight, dated 6/21, Tree Advisory Board Appointment of Gabby Sort.
All right, second. Okay. Any opposed to pulling that from committee? All right, it's out.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to have it sponsored by the full council. Anybody? No one object?
Second.
All right, any opposed? It's full council. Your votes.
Do you wanna read that into the record, Mr. President?
Oh, my God.
Here.
We pulled it from committee, so it just, yeah. I already read it technically, but yeah, be it resolved that pursuant to Section 21731, the following person has been appointed, Gabby Sort.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pull from committee, proposed resolution number three.
Second, Mr. President.
All right. Any opposed?
I know, I know, we already voted on, but it should say when their appointment starts and when their appointment ends on the bottom of the legislation.
Thought that was what the legislation said, huh?
No, but it's got a state on it, so it's got a state, their five-year term commences is September 6th.
It's, it's in the, each appointment.
But it still should stay, it still should stay in, that their date expires.
Isn't it in the legislation? It's in the tree ordinance, Mr. President.
It's up to the council, if you have a vote.
I mean, we already voted on it, but I'm just saying it should, it should say that it expires, their term expires September 6th, 2023.
For a term expiring, I mean.
Okay, that's no problem. We can do that.
All right.
It's fine, I'll vote on it, but it should, it should've said that.
It's in the ordinance, so we're gonna move the rest of them as is. No, I'm saying, are we gonna move the rest of them as is? It doesn't look like anyone else.
Let's move the rest of them as is, and then please mark it, clerk, to be expired that day, all right?
We won't change the resolution, but just held that, yeah, that they're going to expire. Uh, we said, we were, she was referencing the fact that in the actual resolution passed, it doesn't state that the term expires five years from the appointment, but in the tree ordinance, it does state that anyone appointed is appointed for a five-year term, so by nature, it is expiring at five years.
And it should say.
The resolution should reflect it.
Right, right.
Should say so, the ordinance.
Just say the expiration date to each, each ord, each.
Also here, this is our end. Let's amend the two.
Okay.
And what we're gonna do is we'll call for an amendment for a term expiring. The trouble is what's?
Five years from?
September 5th, 2028. At the end of the.
This is like the, do we do term expiring when we do the water board appointment? We got the exact date on it. You have, that goes, that's always December 31st.
Right, so it's gonna have to be the date.
The only problem is you're talking for a five-year term, is that the date that they sign the book.
We'll have to say for five years commencing, for a term commencing on today's date.
For a five-year term commencing September 6th, 2023.
Right?
You can leave it like that, that's all right.
All right, so, five years commencing, five-year term commencing on September 6th, 2023. All right, so I'm, I'm gonna call for the motion to abandon each one of these, and I'll go back to the other real quick. All right, this one, did we pull this one from committee? Sorry, we moved track.
Yes.
All right, so this one's out for the voter. Is Tree Advisory Board Appointment be resolved that pursuant to Section 21731, the following person has been nominated by the mayor, for confirmation by the common council to the Tree Advisory Board, I'm calling for an amendment.
Motion to amend, Mr. President.
All right, so we're gonna, all right, thank you. The amendment will be Tree Advisory Board comma for a five-year term commencing on September 6th, 2023. You're, just, anyone opposed to the amendment?
No.
All right, perfect. Your votes. This is Gina Pierce.
For the amendment?
No. Amendment, no one was opposed, this is for the actual vote.
Nineties adopted.
Next, proposed resolution number four, would someone like to pull that from committee?
Motion, Mr. President.
Second.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, it's out. I'm gonna call for an amendment in the same nature as the last amendment, which is.
Motion to amend, Mr. President.
Second.
All right, it will be Tree Advisory Board comma for a five-year term commencing on September 6th, 2023. This is for Robert Sintas. Any opposed to the amendment? Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
All right, we're gonna go back, and can someone make a motion to reconsider?
Motion, I'd like to motion to reconsider Resolution Number Eight, Mr. President.
Second.
I believe it's, yes, eight. Oh, we're gonna start with eight, okay, that's fine.
I'd like to motion to amend, Mr. President.
Is any opposed to reconsideration? All right, motion to amend, and amendment will be Tree Advisory Board comma for a five-year term commencing on September 6th, 2023. Any opposed to the amendment?
Change appointed.
Yeah, they corrected it.
Yeah, it's a typo. We're just leaving it out. They'll fix that. All right, thank you. Your votes on the actual legislation.
Nineties adopted.
All right.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to reconsider Resolution Number Seven.
Second.
Okay, any opposed? It's on the floor for a vote again.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to amend.
Second.
Okay, the amendment is Tree Advisory Board comma for a term, for a five-year term commencing on September 6th, 2023. Any opposed? No one's opposed. Opposed. Thank you. Councilperson Glossmo Testa.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move our next piece out of committee, the whole avoidable fire alarms, please.
All right. Avoidable fire alarms. It is ordinance number 12, ordinance amending Section 21574. Second? All right, Beatrice is the second. Any opposed to pulling this from committee? Be it ordained that Section 21574 amending Code ordinances is hereby amended to read as follows. A, each alarm user shall pay the city a charge for each and every avoidable alarm to which the city responds in each calendar year as follows. The first to avoidable alarms each calendar year, no charge. Third, 75, fourth, 150, and subsequent, 150 apiece. They shall take effect immediately. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move out of committee, the whole ordinance number 13, dog park fees.
Dog park fees. Anyone? Second? Dog parks. Any opposed? Pulling it from committee. All right, ordinance adding Article V, Chapter 25, of used city code ordinances, be it ordained that Chapter 25 of used city code ordinances shall be amended by adding Article V titled Dog Parks to read as follows, Article 5 dog parks. I'll just read the section headers. Section 2558, access, application, hours. Section 2559, designate the actual schedule. Section 2560, dog park hours and capacity. Section 2561, dog park rules and regulations. And Section 2562, enforcement. Be it further ordained, this ordinance shall take effect immediately. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
If there's no other business, Mr. President, I'd like to motion to close.
Second.